Juliana Rissler. Or Juliana Rissler?
I'm Juliana Rissler, a student at Lakewood High School.
My name is Thomas Sizemore, also a student at Lakewood High School.
I'm Sarah Maronic, a student at Lakewood High School.
I'm Lachlan McLammon, I'm a student at Lakewood High School.
I'm Anna Fairbanks Manke, and I'm a student of Lakewood High School.
I'm Lauren Venesselli, and I'm also a student at Lakewood High School.
My name is Ash Lamarr, and I am not a student at Lakewood High School. I am a student at Chatfield Senior High School.
We would like to begin by saying that although we appreciate the Board's attempt to protect students from bias in curriculum, it should be self-evident that adding more bias is not the appropriate way to go about that.
I would like to begin by asking, the wording of both the original proposal and the revised proposal from Mr. Newkirk is very vague as to the requirements or qualifications to the proposed committee members. I simply ask what gives anyone the right to sit on this proposed committee. From the current wording, if any one of you selected me to be on this committee, and all of you approved me, I could theoretically sit with a group to decide the curriculum for the rest of JFCO. I simply ask you to consider what the community is truly asking of you, and I hope that you can come together to make a logical and educated decision.
We're also here to present an open letter to the Board on behalf of students of Lakewood High School who are unable to attend this meeting. To Jefferson County School Board, "Intelligence Plus Character: That Is The Goal Of True Education," Martin Luther King Jr. Julie Williams, JFCO Board of Education Vice President, recently wrote that she was truly surprised by reactions regarding the AP US History curriculum. The students of Lakewood High School would like to express equal sentiment regarding the unethical and unprofessional actions the Board has taken in relation to these changes. We uphold that the quality and integrity of education ought to be prioritized in any academic administration. The infrastructure and rhetoric of the proposed curricular changes violates the idea. In a September 22 letter, Julie Williams accused the relevant curriculum of omitting the most basic structural and philosophical elements of American history in favor of emphasizing race, gender, class, and ethnicity. Arguably, to subdue these elements of our past is to exclude the experiences of minorities, to paint an idealistically warped picture of American exceptionalism, and to prevent students from understanding the complete truth. The students of Lakewood High School object to the softening of our past and to the questionable manner in which the Jefferson County School Board has chosen to address this issue. We object to the absurd accusation that we are somehow pawns of our administration. The resolution put forth by the Board Committee for Curriculum Review states that the course's materials should present positive aspects of United States and its heritage, and should promote citizenship, patriotism essentials, and benefits of the free enterprise system. Students of Lakewood High School object to this rhetoric because curriculum materials ought to offer historical truth and not promote a specific viewpoint or attitude. True patriotism ought to be based upon accurate understanding of American history, not a biased promotion of American exceptionalism. This resolution further states that the material should promote respect for authority and respect for individual rights, and not encourage or condone civil disorder, social strife, or disregard of the law. The students of Lakewood High School feel that there is thin line between not condoning social strife and civil disobedience and simply excluding them from class materials. The purpose of AP US History is to educate, not to indoctrinate. The students of Lakewood High School uphold that the quality and integrity of our education must continue unimpeded by legislation and must continue to support historical legitimacy.
And finally, an excerpt from a letter from a student at Lakewood High School Jack suits. "Eradicating the flaws from the American history curriculum would not only leave teachers with very little to actually teach, but students would leave with a lack of understanding of our past failures, and as a result, be ill-equipped to deal with the specific areas of our needs and needs of..."
Thank you. Please hold your applause. Dave Rivard and Suzanne Adams. Please hold your applause.
My name is George Meyer. It's 96th on the list. Do you intend to call me?
We're almost to you, George.
Okay, I'll sit right back down.
Chris Boyd, and then Charlie Abel.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Adams, and I'm a parent and a former graduate of Golden High School. I don't know what I can say that hasn't really already been said, but I really just have one question for the new board members regarding the proposed curriculum. Is this a joke? I'm serious. If it's not, I'm really concerned. I really want to wake up tomorrow and hope that this is all a bad dream. I know I won't. Your disrespect for our students and our community is completely disgraceful. I feel you should be ashamed of yourselves, and by the way, we won't stop.
Thank you. Chris Boyd and Charlie Abel.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Abel. I'm a Lakewood resident and a retired Rocky Mountain News reporter. My concern is the comments about making rebels of our children. The implication is that we should expect our students to quietly accept the agendas of government. As a journalist, I learned early that government works best when not allowed to go unquestioned. Without inquisitive observers, we would not have known about Tammany Hall, Pentagon Papers, the Meli massacre, or Monica Lewinsky. Or that Richard Nixon really was a crook. The very thought of squelching such skeptical observation is short-sighted at best. But you did accomplish one thing. By sparking the community engagement, you gave hundreds of students the opportunity to make their voices heard through protocol, providing the best in self-taught civics lessons.
Thank you. Chris Boyd, Scott Albertson.
Thank the board members. If, and I say if with a big capital I F, you all decide that it is necessary to form a curriculum review committee, I would suggest that you ought to do and undertake a little bit more due diligence before you do that. I say that for a couple of reasons. First, as the superintendent has pointed out and others have pointed out, there are currently protocols and procedures in place within the district and the Board of Education's structure for curriculum review, including a content review committee, resource review committee, and a selection committee for textbooks. Why aren't those committees adequate? Second, you've got a professional staff, including a chief academic officer, an executive director of curriculum, and secondary content specialists. Why are those individuals not asked to review the curriculum, do a thorough and comprehensive review, and make a report to you before you decide you need another committee? If you do need another committee, I do suggest that you ought to limit that committee to review the AP+ curriculum, and not charge that committee with reviewing everything from calculus to elementary health.
And then Stacy Welland.
Hello. My name's Courtney Gray, and my daughter Leanne is a senior at Arbada High School and has a 4.7 GPA, and will graduate high school as a sophomore in college. I come here today to oppose the duplicitously proposed committee, as does my daughter. Many have already spoken eloquently for the opposition in changing the AP History curriculum. My concern is the carte blanche license to remove anything, any curriculum deemed objectionable. Your proposal to review sex education curriculum is beyond concerning. It's important to you to know that I'm a proud transgender woman, and I'm quite sure my existence is objectionable to you. Forty percent of homeless youth in our nation identify as LGBT. Your proposal, I fear, will focus on a myopic view of sex, sexual orientation, and gender identity. I encourage you to vote no on this proposal, and if you refuse, I volunteer to serve on your committee.
Thank you. Stacy, please hold your applause. Stacy Welland. And then Amy Alethea Cahill.
My name is Dr. Stacy Welland. I'm a physician and the mother of two students in the JFCO schools. Mrs. Williams, in your proposal for the Board Study Committee on Common Core Standards, you state that the review criteria shall include the following. First, instructional materials should present the most current factual information accurately and objectively. And second, theories should be distinguished from fact. As a physician and a proud proponent of science and the scientific method, your second sentence has really raised my hackles. I practiced medicine in York, Pennsylvania several years ago when the Dover, Pennsylvania, School Board attempted to insert a biology textbook with intelligent design theory of evolution, which is a creationist construct. An often-repeated phrase by proponents of the textbook was that the Darwinian theory of evolution was just a theory and not a fact. I want to remind you that in a subsequent legal battle of Kit Spiller versus the Dover Area School District, the United States District Court ruled that the Dover School Board violated the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, basically referring to the separation of church and state. And finally, the Texas history books may be doing the same thing.
Thank you. Amy Alethea Cahill. And then Kathy Richard.
My name is Amy Alethea Cahill. I am a proud product of Jefferson County Schools Education, Wheat Ridge High School alum. Ladies and gentlemen of the Jefferson County School Board, I address you tonight to express my strenuous objections to any modifications to the AP History curriculum. First of all, this is a curriculum where college credit is involved, and modifying it will prevent JFCO students from getting that credit. But more important is the principle of the revising of the teaching of history to suit one's political ideology. This has been done for thousands of years. It is also wrong. The Declaration of Independence was signed to declare America's opposition to and independence from an oppressive English colonial government. The Boston Tea Party was an organized protest against English tax law. In other words, America is founded on civil disorder, social strife, and disregard of unjust law. Let us be faithful to the vision of our founding fathers and teach our youth to think and act for themselves, not indoctrinate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Richard. And then Deanna Maciantonio Miller.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My sons are at Summit Ridge Middle School and Dakota Ridge. On September 25, the Dakota Ridge students were allowed to leave school without parent or guardian approval. These students were given excused absences for this time. This is a clear violation of district policies regarding parental consent for absence from school, truancy laws, and compulsory attendance laws. Looking at the events of the past two weeks, these walkouts were not a surprise. The schools in the district had ample time to address student concerns, talk to parents, and explain the consequences of leaving school grounds without permission. There's a heated debate about many issues. Instead of teaching kids a better way to protest, they were permitted to take actions that endangered their safety and in many cases went against their parents' wishes. Many people let emotion and self-interest guide their decisions, which resulted in the parents and children losing. While minors have First Amendment rights, they're restricted when they are in school. As a parent, I need to be able to trust the schools that they're looking out for the safety and well-being of my children. That trust has been damaged. I'm proposing that committee task force be formed to investigate this situation. We, as parents, need to have a commitment from the district that policies will be followed and enforced. Thank you.
Deanna Maciantonio Miller. And then Barbara Frost.
Thank you very much. I'm here in support of the proposal to review the AP History, and I'm confused somewhat because this is a review of the AP History that's going on in many districts and states across the nation. This is not special to Jefferson County. It's going on across America right now. The purpose of such a committee would be to check for the balance in viewpoints that are expressed through the course. And in Colorado, there is a standard in history that says that history should be shown from more than one perspective. And to prove this point, I'm going to quote Trevor Parker. Trevor Parker is the Senior Vice President for the AP and Instruction, which means that he oversees the College Board Advanced Placement Program. He stated, "It's difficult, given the dominance of liberal perspectives in college and high school history departments, for faculty committees to avoid unintentional muting, removing, or obstruction of communication."
Thank you. Barbara Frost. And then Richard Mancuso. Barbara Frost.
Hello, I'm Sheila, and I am a parent of a JFCO student. And first of all, I'd like to apologize for all the rude and disrespectful comments that were made to you tonight. I'm sorry for that. I am fully in support of your proposal to review curriculum, and I am in support of it because this evening I've heard so many references to eradicating flaws from history, as if you, the JFCO Board, are the ones doing that. This is ridiculous. The College Board is systematically omitting facts from our history, from our history books. And this is what really disturbs me. There have been many references here tonight to George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, and Martin Luther King Jr. However, interestingly enough, those are the men that are being removed from our history books. And in case you guys don't know, yes, let me just tell you that Thomas Jefferson's first inaugural address is removed, Lincoln's Gettysburg Address is removed, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have A Dream" speech has been removed. There is a vague mention of Thomas Jefferson, and there's many more examples. Thank you.
Alan Gilbert. And Paula Bard.
I'm a parent in this area of two children. I am a John Evans professor for Career Distinction and Research and historian at the University of Denver, author of Black Patriots and Loyalists, the lead title at the University of Chicago Press last year. I want to give a different perspective on this. I would beg you to let me go on for another half minute if I don't get through. I am part of the John Evans Review Committee, being an Evans professor at the university. Our chancellor today said that the most important thing, even when it's painful, is to seek truth, because it is only from understanding the truth that we will come together. There are no Cheyans and Arapaho Indians because John Evans and John Chivington massacred them. This is not a partisan issue. Ben Nighthorse Campbell proposed the legislation for the memorial. The people, the way you're acting is a real mistake. Conservatives want small government, not intrusive government. It is very important that people, hang on a second, who have looked into this for a long time, actually discuss what's true, and that we rely not on claims about textbooks, because I don't like the AP curriculum particularly, but on honorable assessment by independent boards. If you want an historian with credibility, you can appoint me, and that would be a mistake.
Paula Bard.
It's nice to see you in person. I haven't seen any of you before, so. We have been parents of children in this district for 20 years.
I'm sorry, would you state your name?
Paula Bard.
Thank you.
I do not want to see a new committee forum to review the curriculum here. It would be ridiculous to try to teach US history without reference to social strife and civil disorder. They have been the bedrock of the country since its inception. The current right-wing takeover of the Board has caused enormous disruption, conflict, and wasted money. They have no business dismantling a perfectly functional school district with their code words for extremist anti-union, anti-intellectual, rah-rah, free-market capitalism, bring back Ronald Reagan, and dismantle the New Deal agenda. This will turn US history into classrooms for propaganda, nothing more. To quote the National Coalition on Censorship, they and I strongly urge you to adopt policies and procedures that focus not on molding patriots or citizens in a particular image, but on educating students to be informed, knowledgeable, thoughtful, and engaged participants in those communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Thout.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for your service. I think you have a very difficult job. My concern, and many people have been articulate about different things I've thought about over the last few days, as I read every page of the AP American History, and also read your proposal. What I'm here to ask for is for you to recognize that perhaps, at least from my point of view, your processes have been flawed, and as you look at the outcomes, I think you might see the truth in that. I would ask you to reject the proposal, go back to the drawing board, and consider what you might do to really govern with everyone in this room and everyone in Jefferson County stepping to the plate and being counted. I live in Wheat Ridge, I'm a taxpayer, and I've been a teacher and professor for 40 years.
Thank you. Chris Adams. And if it's okay with the Board, we're at two hours, but we only have a small number left in Part One. I'd like to finish. Does anyone object to that? Okay. Chris Adams. George Meyer.
Thank you. This book, I don't know how many people know what it is, but it's the Colorado Constitution. How many people in this room have a copy of this? Please raise your hand. Look around, folks. Do you think that's enough? I do not. Do you think this is important to the teachers and education in Colorado? Absolutely. I'm going to give you one example. Article 9 relates to education. Section 1, Supervision of Schools, Board of Education, the general supervision of public schools of the state shall be vested in a Board of Education whose powers and duties shall be as now or hereafter prescribed by law. And there's many sections in there. The most important one, I think, that's in there. Section 15, Board of Education, said directors shall have control over instruction in the public schools and their representative districts. And people here want to take that away. I think we need it. We need instruction to say, "These people that are up here, and go from there." Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Stutz. And then Dan Maers or Maras.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I do serve on your Strategic Planning Advisory Council, but I'm here tonight representing two kids in the Columbine articulation area. I really came here tonight only to talk about APish. I get the feeling that a lot of us will be getting together at many times in the next couple of years to talk about issues, but that's really the one I have here. I tried to boil this down to what I think are kind of the facts of the situation. And to me, we have a pocketbook issue. And we've heard some discussion about that already, how this can affect us. I also think that in a way, whether you form this committee or not, it doesn't really matter. It actually comes down to the fact that this curriculum is put together by the College Board, and you either accept it or you don't. And no matter what the committee finds out over the next couple of months, or whatever it takes to look at it, that's not, the fact's not going to change. This isn't about censorship by the College Board. The College Board represents 3,300 universities and colleges around the nation. It's their ballgame. Again, we accept what they put forward, or we move on. Thank you for your time.
Teresa Scholz. Jeannie Karides or Karides? Or Karides? Sorry, too many possibilities on that one. Teresa Scholz. Jeannie Karides. Angie Drum. Sarah Davidon.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Angie Drum. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I echo many of the concerns already stated, and I urge you to vote no. The notion of creating committee and appointing members having no subject matter expert expertise, and then have that committee determine what is objectionable, is absurd and unnecessary. This is step one in a systematic approach to dismantle public education so that you can insert your political and/or religious agenda into my child's education. No way. It may start with AP History, but where will it end? It is completely inappropriate, an abuse of power, and not in the best interest of our children, and it is policymaking of the worst kind. I am further disheartened by recent op-ed and media interviews by some board members seemingly dismissive of the public outcry. And as elected representatives of the citizen Jefferson County, you should be ashamed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that completes Part One, a public comment.
Can I speak, please, on the same subject? I'm signed up for Section 2.
On the same subject, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Cynthia Perry, and I'm a JFCO parent. And I wanted to learn what an effective school board does, so I did some research. The consensus among a number of national organizations is the number one thing an effective school board focuses on is student achievement. School Board Curriculum Review Committees, where they exist, in districts with improved student performance, focus on performance data, standards and assessments, consistency in teaching, and improved achievement. Reviewing APUSH will not improve student achievement. APUSH is an elective, and students have other options. They don't have to take this class. So let's focus on student achievement, please. And people with concerns about APUSH can and should take them to the College Board, not to the JFCO School Board. Let's remember. Thank you very much.
We're going to take a 10-minute break, and then resume with the agenda. Okay, tonight, we're pleased to recognize the JFCO Employee Team members, the JFCO Employee Team of the Colfax Marathon Relay. Excuse me. Please take your conversations outside so we can resume the meeting. Tonight, we'd like to honor the JFCO Employee Team, the Colfax Marathon Relay. Can the members of the Colfax Marathon Relay Team join us up front?
Good evening. Thanks for having us here. My name's Andrea Doughty. I'm the CEO of the Colfax Marathon, and the first thing I'd like to do is introduce Rick Rush from Kaiser Permanente.
Thanks, Andrea, members of the Board, Superintendent McMinamy. For those of you who I have not had the pleasure to meet, as Andrea mentioned, my name is Rick Rush. Thank you for your time this evening. As most of the people here this evening know, I'm a former board member for JFCO Public Schools. I also chair the Strategic Planning Advisory Council. I was a member of the Financial Oversight Committee. I served on innumerable boards and committees, and more importantly, I'm a proud parent of two Chatfield Chargers who also attended Duke Meadows Elementary and Deer Creek Middle School. My function here this evening, however, is I'm representing Kaiser Permanente, Colorado, where I'm the Chief Actuary. For the students here, look it up, Chief Actuary, A-C-T-U-A-R-Y. Adults might want to look that up as well. I'm pleased to be here this evening with representatives of the Colfax Marathon. The health of Jefferson County Schools, employees, teachers, and students, and the health of all Jefferson County communities is important to Kaiser Permanente. And as the Chief Actuary, A-C-T-U-A-R-Y, I know that good health equates to strong communities and affordable costs. This is the second year that JFCO Schools has had a top team in the Government Cup Relay Division of the Colfax Marathon, and that's a great accomplishment given the record number of participants. This year, the Colfax Marathon saw over This year, the Colfax Marathon saw over 17,000 people register for one of the cup race events, and about 150 teams participated in the Government Cup. For Kaiser Permanente, events like this are a sound investment in the cities, the county, and the state. The Colfax Marathon encourages Coloradoans to get and be healthy. It builds economic vitality for the businesses in the neighborhoods along the courses. In addition to the Colfax Marathon, Kaiser Permanente invests in Jefferson County and Jeffco Schools in many ways, including some of the following. We are proud to serve the nearly 12,000 Jeffco Public School employees and their families, covered by Kaiser Permanente through the district's health insurance plan. We employ hundreds of employees living and working in Jefferson County through our medical offices in Arvada, Lakewood, Ken Carroll, Littleton, Hidden Lake, Wheat Ridge, and Evergreen. In 2014, over 5,000 Medicaid and Child Health Plan members were served by Jefferson, served by Kaiser Permanente in Jefferson County. And as a nonprofit organization ourself, we support other key nonprofits and community organizations like the Jefferson Schools Foundation, the Jeffco Action Center, and the Community Farms at the Denver Botanic Gardens at Chatfield. Most recently, through an initiative entitled Thriving Schools, we provided a $200,000 grant to Jeffco Public Schools in February to improve tools and resources that will get school communities eating healthier and more active. In fact, to support that grant, I believe tomorrow we have volunteers going out to Bear Creek Elementary School to work in the garden. And here today, we are here for the Government Cup, through which we partner with the Colfax Marathon to provide additional funds to community organizations chosen by the winning relay teams. Thank you again this evening for your time. I'll now turn it over to Andrea Doughty from the Colfax Marathon to recognize the winning teams from Jeffco Schools and the nonprofits they designated.
Thank you. Before I get started, is Clint Boston here, or anyone from his relay team? And if Tiffany Loan is here, if you could come to the front, that would be terrific. I'm here, and I'd love to sort of just speak to the crowd. We're here, we're very excited to be here from the Colfax Marathon, and we thank Kaiser Permanente. We actually support over 150 nonprofits through the race, which is amazing. I thought for a second that you were Clint Boston, captain, the relay team, but I guess not. We had 14 Jeffco teams, and I just wanted to comment that this was one of the largest organizations in the marathon to bring teams from their company or government entity. So congratulations to Jeffco to focus so much on wellness initiatives. It's just a tremendous accomplishment. We're so proud of the Government Cup now because over one-third of it supports schools. That means over 50 of these 150 teams actually are school teams, they're running for schools, or they're raising money for their school. And before I comment on the winning team, I want to comment that Ralston Elementary, is anybody here from Ralston Elementary or related to it? Oh, way back there? Congratulations. They were one of our top elementary schools raising money. They raised over $10,000 for their STEM lab. So round of applause. Did you run? She doesn't want to say. So this terrific Jeffco team, and I don't know if they're here tonight, because I know it was difficult to get in the room. This is actually the second year they've placed, and they've earned money for a nonprofit, which is absolutely wonderful. They worked so hard to train and get ready for this Marathon Relay, and at the end of the day, they're able to give $2,000 to a nonprofit. It's tremendous. They actually held our all-time record for the Government Cup. They just missed it this year, but we're ready and waiting for them to come back next year and break that record. Couple things, the reason that they ran is really for health and wellness, but also when they took a look at what nonprofit to choose this year, they chose one that, it's called Brent's Place. And what Brent's Place is, it's all about helping kids with cancer. And if you're familiar at all with this organization, it's really when the kids are leaving the hospital, but they can't quite go home yet because it's not safe and clean enough, just from immunization or immunity perspective. These kids have a place to go with their families, where they really truly can be kids. So I just want to say Clint Boston, and let me name all the people on his team, Tim Campbell, Dylan Fairman, Melissa Fine, and Josh Wright. They couldn't be here tonight, but let's give them a huge round of applause. This is the wonderful thing they're doing. So just for great fun, I'd just like to throw down the gauntlet. We'd love to see Jeffco come back next year. It's the teachers, the families, the students. We'd love you to really go out there, run, get fit, stay healthy, and be really be well. But at the same time, we'd love you to raise money for your own organization. If you ever have a question, just let me know. Trophy, this is for Clint and the team, and the big check, we're going to have Gordon Louie just receive the check on behalf of Brent's Place. And Gordon, just don't forget, this is the real check, because that doesn't work at the bank. And I don't want to forget it. So thank you so much. We also have certificates for each of the runners, and we'll make sure that they get those certificates. So thank you for letting us take your time this evening.
Mr. McMinamy.
Yes, Lori Gillis, join me up here. Steve Bell. I would like you to please join me in honoring a very special staff member that's been part of the Jeffco family for 12 years. Lori Gillis has served as the Chief Financial Officer for Jeffco Public Schools since 2002, and today is her last effective day as a Jeffco employee. As a member of the district's leadership team, she's been responsible for managing district financial, human resource, and information technology needs. Played key leadership roles in budget development, human capital management, capital financing, community engagement, technology improvement, and other large-scale initiatives taken on by Jeffco Schools. Ms. Gillis has ensured that the district is financially sound and transparent, always keeping what is best for students at the forefront. I would like to read the inscription on a small memento that we have for her from the district. It says, Lori Gillis, Chief Financial Officer, Jeffco Public Schools, from 2002 through 2014. Excellence and integrity in action. I know this is a great opportunity for Lori to contribute her skills to the city of Arvada, and we wish her the very best as she begins a new chapter in her professional life. But we're going to miss Lori a lot. She's done a lot of great things for Jeffco Schools. If you'd please join me in honoring Ms. Lori Gillis.
Thank you. And I believe we had one student left in Part Two that was not called out. Rather than making them wait till the end of the agenda, I wanted to make certain that we covered, I think it's Aj White. Is, I believe it's AJ White here?
Okay. My name is AJ White. I will be heard. We both know your actions are not for the good of the schools in this district, not for the good of the students nor teachers. I'm here to ask you a simple question. I want you to answer honestly and in front of everyone. Qui bono? Who do you work for? Who profits most from your actions? Because I know it's not us. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda. I believe we had one item pulled off of the consent agenda earlier. Is it on the? Yes. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Witt, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as revised.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Dahl Kemper?
Yes.
Ms. Philman?
Yes.
Mr. Newkirk?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes. As a point of privilege, I'll mention briefly that the last time we had a meeting in this room, the walls were torn up, and we had audio system difficulties and an absence of function. And now we have new monitors and a delightful audio system. So thank you, district, for putting in the needed infrastructure. And with that, we'll begin with our Curriculum Review Committee agenda item. We had two. We had a draft, a second draft of the Curriculum Review Committee attached to this agenda item. And subsequently, Mr. McMinamy offered some thoughts from the district on a proposal for such a committee as well. And with that, I think we'd like to open this for some discussion. Just as some background, on September 4th, Board Member Julie Williams proposed creation of a Board Curriculum Review Committee. On September 18th, Ms. Williams and Board Member John Newkirk offered proposals, and there was board discussion, agreed to address at a future date. The board agreed to schedule a discussion of the draft proposal for the October 2nd regular business meeting. And with that, Mr. McMinamy, did you want to say anything about the draft that you had proposed?
Sure. You know, I spent the last two weeks in schools with kids, taking phone calls and texts and emails from parents, as many of you did. And I think what the proposal I'm putting forward this evening, I think, is the middle ground, clearly. Clearly, it's the board's responsibility through the Colorado Constitution to review curriculum. But as you've heard multiple people say, there is a vehicle currently in district policy that will get us there. So my proposal, moving forward, is for us to take the existing IJ and IJR policy with a few minor adjustments. And those adjustments would be to add students to the committees, and also to add community members at your discretion. So taking the information from Director Newkirk's proposal, and each one of you would be allowed to select two people. One of those persons would become a part of the first committee that's really looking at the resources that go into play in this class. And then the other person would be a part of the other committee. I think it's important for us to honor the teachers that teach these classes. I think there's some fabulous teachers that could lend some excellent experience to the discussion in either of these committees. I think clearly there's content specialists that work at the district office that could be a part of that committee. And you saw the proposal I put forward today. I think clearly this is the middle ground. I believe that our students have shown this evening that they could lend a tremendous amount of information to this committee about being in the class, or about what they used to do when they were in the class. And I think they'd be an important part of the conversation as well. So my proposal is that, that we take an existing policy, IJ and IJR. We expand both of those committees with community members and students, and we have this committee move forward with taking a look at this.
Absolutely. I'll go around, and I know there's going to be discussion, so I'll give everyone an opportunity. Ms. Solomon.
Mr. McMinamy, I'm wondering if you could address how we might ensure that there's geographic representation on this committee, so it's not just all kids or all citizens from one particular area?
Right. So I thought probably the best way to do that would be to have building principals or teachers nominate students from all of our 19 high schools, and then from that group, we would take a look at that with Dr. Morgan.
So you would make that decision?
No, I think that we'd have to define what that process is. This is just a strong man for us to get the conversation started. I think the specifics, obviously, you need to make that decision. But I would propose that our building principals and the teachers that have these students in classes know which kids could lend some experience to this conversation.
I appreciate that, and I'm going to go a little bit broader from just the kids. Looking at the committee as a whole, the geographic representation, I remember when, back in the day, when I would look at this committee, we had a 50% rule where it was balanced 50% students, 50% content specialists, and that was really important to us because the content people could add their expertise, as you suggested. But we also made sure that we had representation from all of the articulation areas, and I didn't see anything in your proposal about that.
Well, I didn't put a number in there. I just said students, and I think that's your decision.
I'm not talking about students. I'm actually talking about the entire committee.
Well, I think, again, I didn't really put numbers to the people. I just said, I think it needs to have broad representation. How the numbers come out, I think we should talk about that.
So what I would recommend is that we keep the 50/50 balance, that we keep the content representation. And here's why I think that's so important. I heard over and over and over again from people who had not taught, or was not familiar with the content in a particular class, or in a particular textbook that they were reading, if they did not have that expertise, it was really hard for them to imagine how that might look in a classroom. So it was really important to have that balance.
Totally agree.
Ms. Dahl Kemper.
We just received, first, I want to thank you for proposing another alternative for the board to consider, and I appreciate it very much in terms of trying to find some middle ground. I am not prepared to vote on this tonight, of course. As is our practice, this board reviews, asks questions, studies policies first, and then we come back at our second board meeting, and we take a vote, if that's what we choose to do on any resolution or proposal. I want to take a moment, and I want to talk to our kids in Jeffco tonight. I want to tell you that I am incredibly proud of you for standing up for academic integrity. I am proud of you for your eloquence this evening, and I want to thank you for being engaged, informed citizens in what happens in your classrooms. The community elected this board to serve you and to act in the best interests of your education. As you know, I have said that this resolution that is before the board is too extreme, and you deserve an unvarnished view of history, because you're historians when you're in these classes. You're analytical thinkers, you're gathering information, you're pulling together different evidence, you're having bold conversations, and rich and deep, meaningful conversations. I also want to be really clear that it is not this board's role to point fingers, to blame students, to call them pawns, to blame teachers, or to blame others. The responsibility regarding, the discussion regarding this resolution rests squarely on the shoulders of this school board. It was the school board that introduced this resolution, and it is my hope tonight that this board will withdraw this resolution, which has been nothing but a distraction to the work of this board. We've got a lot of work ahead, from closing the achievement gap, to addressing facilities issues, to thinking about how we're going to leverage the taxpayer dollars that we have to ensure all kids are successful once they graduate from a Jeffco school. So I would hope tonight that this board chooses to withdraw the resolution, or that it would support a motion to kill the resolution, and from this point forward, we move forward and discuss further the proposal that has been put forward by the superintendent. And I will also say for the record, I am perfectly fine with the current process that we have for reviewing curriculum.
We told you, applause. I very much appreciate many of the points in the, number one, in Mr. Newkirk's draft, which captured most of the dialogue, or a lot of the dialogue that occurred in the first meeting. And I appreciate trying to pull that together, capture the feedback, and come back with words that are very similar to where we ended up, but not a lot of dialogue sense. The proposal that Mr. McMinamy has offered adds, I think, some very important elements that we've seen from the community as a desire, and that includes students' voice, ensuring that we have teachers' voice, but not just any teachers, but the teachers that have content expertise, which I think is critical and very much needed. The rigor of the committee, or the potential rigor of the committee, is very much appreciated as well. The one, in discussing, in the written discussion that you offered of how that committee might function, you reference Policy IJ and Policy IJR, and I would agree that this meets both of those policies. The policy that this does not meet is IGA, which says that the board will review curriculum on a periodic basis, unless this is a board committee. And quite honestly, with this structure, and adding this committee to GP 13, so that the board is certain to get a report, but also so that the public is certain to be aware of the meetings, so that they're posted, and they know what is being reviewed and what the schedule is for that, I would welcome this proposal with the board being able to approve. appoint two members each. That addresses Ms. Feldman's concern about geography as well. So I appreciate that that can be covered there, as we each represent a district.
From our own district.
Well, you could. So that would allow you to address the concern. And that would also allow us to make certain that we have the kinds of eyes that we're looking for, to make certain that we have a balanced and full review. So with that compromise that you've offered here, and taking this proposal as a Board Committee, adding it to GP 13, so that meetings are public and are scheduled, I am actually very pleased with this compromise proposal. Ms. Williams.
So, I did read over this as well. And in many ways, I wish at the last meeting, we would have been able to have this discussion. When I put forward a proposal, and it was just full of accusations and not discussion, that was very disappointing. I think Mr. McMenamy has put forward a very good program. I do agree with Mr. Witt of having each of us being able to choose two community members, taxpayers, to be able to weigh in on what our children, our learning is very important. They do pay for our education for our children, and they should be able to be on this committee. I would want it to be public, such as Mr. Witt said, with those meetings being public and listed as a Board Committee on the Board calendar.
Mr. Newkirk.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. And tonight, I really am not so interested in commenting on the merits or shortcomings of any particular curriculum, whether it's AP US History, Sex Education, Reading, Writing, Math, or otherwise. My main concern is ensuring that this Board does honor the policies set forth for any curriculum in our district. Now, listen to the language from our own curriculum policy, Policy IGA, which this district adopted in 1997. And I'll quote the language from it. "Board-adopted curriculums shall be reviewed by professional staff and identified parent-citizen advisory committees, at least every five years, and major changes in the curriculum shall be approved by the Board." Now, tonight, and over the last two weeks, I've been assured by many sources, by fellow Board members, by staff, by teachers and students, all the way down to eighth grade now, that we already have two curriculum committees in place. So why would we need another one? Well, taken at face value, it's a valid question. But dig a little deeper, and I'm coming up with more questions than I have answers. For example, could someone point me to the public meeting notices that were posted before these committees met? Where are the minutes of those committee meetings, and are they available to the public? Was there a minority and a majority report presented? How many members are there in these committees? How were they selected? When was the last time new committee members were named, and who named them, and what were the criteria? Are these two committees representative of our community and the Board, or have the same members been there for years? And are parents-citizens adequately represented, as required by Board Policy IGA? And finally, since it has been brought up, when was the last time a parent-citizen committee reviewed AP US History? So the course has been around for a while, so certainly there should be evidence that a review has taken place per Board policy. There should be evidence that the voices of the parents, taxpayers, and other stakeholders were heard. So if this isn't the case, then I'd say these two committees I've heard so much about are not necessarily following procedure. And it's the Board's responsibility to have a committee that does. And I mention this not in a spirit of recrimination for any past omissions, but in a spirit of determination that, going forward, this be done properly. The key word for Jefferson County Public Schools is "public." So when it comes to our public, we have to ask, have our committees been representative or exclusive? And frankly, AP History wasn't even on my radar until the past few weeks. But when I saw the anger and some of the misinformation going around, just from the mere suggestion that the new framework be reviewed, it certainly got my attention. And so my position is this: Any curriculum or its advocates that either resist or can't bear the inquiring scrutiny of the general public deserves that scrutiny even more. If any curriculum of those who created it, and if they've got nothing to conceal, then they certainly have nothing to fear, from a balanced committee of citizens, parents, and, as Mr. McMenamy had just suggested, students and teachers, all of whom are free to make their opinions known to the Board. Now, without this, the public is being disenfranchised of their right to review the learning material they're paying for, and the material our children are absorbing. So if existing committees have not properly included the public, then they need to start doing so. Or as Ms. Williams suggested, it's up to the Board to form a committee that will.
May I may I respond, please?
Ms. Feldman, I'll go around another time here. We have discussion.
I think it's really important that we think about our role. Our role is to direct the Superintendent. Our role is to say, you know what, this is your policy, this is a district policy, we want to see it, we want to see it implemented. Our role is not to implement. That is the Director's or the Superintendent's role. I get very upset when I see that we are micromanaging our district, and I don't think that's correct. What I will say about US History, since Mr. Newkirk brought it up, in a letter that was sent from the National Coalition for History to Mr. Paul Lundeen, who is the Chairman of the State Board of Education, it says, and I quote, "There is ample room for those of all political persuasions and educational philosophies to work together." That is what we're not doing here. We are not working together. We need to tell our Superintendent, we expect this, we want to see this happening, and we need to allow him to do his job.
Ms. Dahl Kemper.
Mr. Newkirk, I want to play this out a little bit more. I appreciate your comments about curriculum committee, about minutes, about making sure that there's good representation. I appreciate your thoughts on that. But let's think this through a little bit further. Let's say a curriculum committee is formed to look at AP US History. The curriculum committee decides it's not the right fit for Jeffco, and says, we want to change it. The reality is that the College Board, not the local school board, sets AP US History. That's the bottom line. We've also heard that in public comment tonight. So I question, again, what problem it is that we're trying to solve with the original resolution, with the edited resolution. And I look forward to reading in more detail the Superintendent's proposal to find some middle ground, which is much appreciated.
I think it's important to bear in mind that neither in the initial proposal, nor in either Draft Two, or the proposal from Mr. McMenamy either, does this committee, or would this committee, have any power other than review and advice? It's purely proposed as an advisory committee to assist the Board in its constitutional obligation to oversee instruction, and the Board's district policy requirement to review and approve curriculum, and to make certain that we are doing that on an occasional basis and when curriculum changes. The fact that it's purely advisory is very important to understand, because there are many who have said, what will we do when they revise history? There was no proposal to revise history. The proposal was to review the history curriculum to ensure that it is balanced and thorough and appropriate for Jeffco. There is also a misunderstanding in the AP framework. It is a framework. They don't forbid instructors from teaching additional material. They simply require that all of the elements of the framework be covered. I am very much appreciative of the opportunity for our students for AP History and any AP course. It's a great advantage to them to be able to take a course that provides college credit, or gives them an opportunity for college credit. It's a great advantage to them to be able to participate in a course that is at college level or approaches college level for them. So I'm very much appreciative of AP courses. But it doesn't remove from this Board the responsibility to ensure that our curriculum is balanced and fair and adequate. And I think any curriculum choice in this district bears scrutiny, bears review, and certainly bears direct approval, informed approval, by the Board, as is our responsibility. And for that reason, I like where we've ended up with this committee proposal. Again, with a couple of modifications, specifically the modification to move it into GP 13, so we know that it's being treated as a Board Committee, so the public is informed. I actually like it.
It's not a Board Committee. It should be a district committee. It is a district committee. We do not need an additional Board Committee.
Thank you.
We need additional Board review. We can have a report. We do not need another committee.
Right. And so I actually propose, at the end, when we talk about process, you can find it here. There's a piece in here that talks about making sure that the report back to the Board of Education has both a majority and a minority report, so that you would see exactly what the committee discussed. I think there, if the wish is to have it wide open for anybody that wants to be there to observe what's going on, I don't see a problem with that. I've talked about it with Dr. Morgan, and I don't think there'd be a problem with people there that wanted to observe. If there wanted to be Board members there to be a part or observe, I think that's what we should be doing. I mean, there's no hidden agenda here. I guess where I'm coming from is I think this is a great opportunity for us to demonstrate over the last two weeks, we've heard what everyone has said, and that's really what I tried to incorporate into this. You know, and each time I've had opportunities to talk with you individually and heard the things that have been said, I think this meets the needs of the people on this Board of Education. When I had an opportunity to stand in an auditorium with 300 students, and hear the questions they were asking, and interpret what that would mean, I heard clearly that they wanted to be a part of the process of their education moving forward. From the volume of letters we've gotten from parents and from others, same as you have, I think we've heard loud and clear that people want to be engaged in the processes that we have. And so I think that's the thing I've heard over and over and over, is how can we have a committee that is going to be flexible enough when there's questions? You know, so the next time there's a question about another piece of curriculum, maybe we scramble it a little bit, and we have different content specialists, we have different students. I'm talking about a framework to use moving forward. So clearly, I think that we need to make sure that we try to do something with a committee that's going to do that.
Will you address the difference between it being a Board Committee or a District Committee? What is the bottom-line difference there?
Well, I think what I heard President Witt say was that it was the posting of the meetings, which I think we can say that we're going to do that within our committee, either-or. I mean, district policy or GP 13. I mean, if that's a requirement that you want to make sure happens, so that people recognize when those happen, to me, that's the only difference.
Mr. McMenamy, I'm lifting some of the language from your proposal here, and trying to honor Mr. Witt's interest in satisfying IGA as well as GP 13. And let me know if this language here is reflective of what your intent is in including more of our community. And I'm adding it to the now-second draft that I've marked up of Ms. Williams' original proposal.
Okay.
So, it would say, each director may name up to two members of the committee. The district's chief academic officer shall serve as advisor to the committee. And the committee shall include two teachers of the subject at hand, and one student currently enrolled in the curriculum, and one student who has already completed the curriculum. Would you comment on that proposed language?
Well, I think we can talk about numbers however we want to. I think the intention is, is that we have a balanced perspective when we start the discussions here. So, I mean, whatever resolutions we want to come to, as we're bringing this back at a future date, to talk about how this is going to be comprised, I think that's important to make sure that everybody at this table says, you know what, I think that's the best possible solution to this. So, I don't have any problem with that. I think we need to talk about it further, for sure.
Ms. Williams.
So I just wanted to clarify, I know that one of the students asked if anyone had complained about the new AP US History. And I just wanted to put out that the reason why I made that the first Agenda item for a review committee is because it is brand-new. And we will have a lot of changes in curriculum with the implementation of Common Core. And I do believe it is our tax-paying citizens' right who do fund our education to be able to have that input. So I'm really glad that all of us agree that our community should be able to be on this Board and give us input.
I would agree.
Ms. Feldman.
However, since 2011, the AP College Board has reviewed 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 different classes, not including AP US History. It is not the first time.
And I posed some questions when I was speaking earlier, and I wonder if there's somebody in the district that might actually be able to shed some light on that. For example, what are the names of these two committees, and who is on them, and how many members are there?
So currently in policy, IJR, number three on the resolution I put forward that's cut directly from the committee, there's a, it's a two-part process, basically, in IJR. The first committee is a content review committee, and the committee is currently comprised of content specialists and teachers. This is where I propose adding community members and students. The committee will include a district facilitator. And so this first group, their role is to take a look at the content that's being delivered. What is the resource? So teachers, instructional coaches, community members, content specialists, a facilitator who may or may not be from the above groups. I propose a chief academic officer, and add students to this. From there, utilizing a rubric, this group would be responsible for content review. Alignment to Board End's policies will be ensured. If the resources align, the committee will recommend the text proceeds to a pilot phase. So clearly, I heard that there was both the content that people wanted to talk about and the instruction that was happening in classrooms. So this would take care of reviewing the content. The next step, then, once the content's been reviewed, is it goes to a resource review committee. And the membership on that would be a minimum of one administrator, one facilitator, again, the chief academic officer, or their designee, teachers, community members, and again, I would propose students that are a part of this. Their job, roles, and responsibilities is to use a rubric approved by the chief academic officer or designee. And committee shall consider the following criteria for the resource: developmentally appropriate, various opportunities for application and transfer of student learning, opportunities to enhance the quality of instruction, assessments that measure what the student understands, knows, and are able to do, extensions of the original text to meet the diverse needs of a wide variety of students, including ELL, GT, and SPED students, quality of language, illustrations, photographs, which ensure materials are nondiscriminatory and age-appropriate. The committee will also consider the body of evidence put forth by the content review committee, any available student performance data from use in schools, completed rubrics to determine suitability. After that, then, it comes to the Board of Education. And you take a look at the body of evidence from both of these committees, and it also has a provision in there, if you want to have this as part of the policy, following the work of the committee, the information could be placed in the Jefferson County Public Library for a review for public input for two weeks. And then any comments made on that would come back to the committee to do a final review and see if the comments align, or if there's additional work that they need to do. And then it's brought to the Board for their consideration, recommending approval or not.
Ms. Dahl Kemper.
Ms. Williams, Mr. Newkirk, I am asking you to withdraw your resolution, and the edited version, Mr. Newkirk, of Ms. Williams' original resolution, in favor of further conversation and discussion by this Board of the draft proposal that the Superintendent has shared with us.
I have a couple more questions.
Ms. Williams.
So, all of the members on the committee, other than our chief academic officer, I would ask the Board to make a time limit, as far as how long they can be on that committee, so that it cycles through and gives more community members a chance to be on it, whether it's two years or four years, or...
Isn't it typically by expertise and interest in a certain content?
So I think we could write that in there and say, you know what, this committee exists for the one specific purpose.
Yeah.
And then, once the purpose is done, it's done, but we still have the process. So if another piece comes forward, then we reformulate the committee based on the content, based on the students that would be in that course, based on teachers, obviously, community member interest, the people that you selected to be on there. So we could turn it over pretty easily, just by saying, you know, this group's responsible for this length of time, for this specific... for this length of time, for this specific purpose. When their report is done, the committee's disbanded, and we bring it back again, if we need to, in a different formulation.
Okay.
And then the board appointees, you know, it's, the board member can decide whether to reappoint or, or stay with the same person. So you, you're in control of that as well, if you want to rotate people through, or if you want to keep some continuity.
That's correct.
Yeah, I like that.
Thank you, Mr. McMenamy. I like the idea of a dynamic committee. And my concern too is that we do continue to honor policy IGA, which, which is not referenced here. So if that's something that we could add in or amend, that, to ensure that we are, and I will reread it because I think it's very important, "Board adopted curriculum shall be reviewed by professional staff and identified parent-citizen advisory committees." So the parent-citizen advisory part is, is the one that I sense has been lacking a little bit in the last few years. So I would want to make sure that our community is brought in and adequately represented on these. What do you see, how do you foresee the final makeup as far as numerically? What, I mean, just pick, pick a typical curriculum, anything but AP US History.
Well, I, I know we have, I know we have 19 different articulations areas, and one of the things that I heard is that we want to have representation from all of those areas. So we'd have to be really careful about how we formulate that from a community standpoint, from a student standpoint. From a content specialist standpoint, you know, let's pick health and PE. Maybe that's a good example, maybe it's not. How about math? That one's easier. Okay, so we know we have math content specialists right now. And, and I would propose that depending upon the level that we are looking at, we have the appropriate one. There may be a secondary math content specialist, an elementary math content specialist, or multiple layers of that. And I would rely on the chief academic officer to make sure that we have the right people in the room from the content that's, that you're asking us to take a look at. And so, I don't know if that's a great example, but I think, I think this is an example of one size fits one instead of one size fits all.
Ms. Williams?
So I would like us to narrow down the number of people that are on the board. I want to make sure that our community members have full representation. So if we had 19 areas, I mean, that's a big board. And when, the bigger the board, it seems like the longer it takes to get things done because there's, you know...
I agree.
So much controversy. So I'd, I'd like to have a further discussion on that.
So in the past, wasn't the 19, you know, like, part teachers, part citizens, part, now we would have students. It wouldn't be like we'd have to have 54 people. We would have 19.
I'm not proposing we have 19 of each type, so 19 community members, 19 students. I think what we do is we just want to make sure that we have representation in some way, shape, or form on this committee from someone in each one of those articulation areas as best we can.
Agreed.
Okay.
Is there a motion on this issue?
I would, I, hold on one sec. I'm so sorry. It is our, it is our practice as a board. It is in policy that we accept a proposal, we take the time to study it, we take the time to read it. We received this proposal early this morning from the superintendent. It's a good proposal. It's something to study further. And I would recommend that this board put it back on its agenda for a vote, as is our practice, at our next board meeting, so that we have time to review it, to ask follow-up questions of our superintendent as we have additional thoughts that occur to us.
Mr. Witt?
Yes, Ms. Williams?
Can I ask you, Ms. Dahlkemper, is there anything about the proposal that you're not happy with or unsure about?
Ms. Williams...
That we can, you know, make sure we have a chance to talk about it now?
Ms. Williams, I have not, I, I have not had an opportunity to review this proposal in depth. So I would like an opportunity to do that, to come back with questions, and for the board to... I don't know if you all have had an opportunity to see this before today. I can't imagine that that is the case, but I have not. So I would like the opportunity to review it. I would also like to re-ask my question to you and Mr. Newkirk. In light of the new proposal that is on the table, that we would come back and address at our next, next board meeting, are you willing to withdraw the original resolution and the edited resolution tonight in response to what we've heard from our community? We have an opportunity as a board for the first time to say loudly and clearly to our community and to our students, "We heard you. We're responding. We're withdrawing the resolution." Is that something that you can do this evening?
Ms. Dahlkemper, I would underscore a couple of items.
I'm sorry, I was addressing, I was talking with Ms. Williams.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Witt, thank you. Please don't interrupt. Ms. Williams, is that something that I can ask that you would be willing to do?
Ms. Dahlkemper, I'm not interrupting you.
You are interrupting me, Mr. Witt. Thank you.
Will you yield the floor?
Ms. Williams?
I would yield the floor to you, Mr. Witt.
Thank you. Ms. Dahlkemper, I would point out, I would point, Ms. Dahlkemper, please don't interrupt. I would point out that this...
Excuse me. I think the only interruption, Mr. Witt, came from you.
Ms. Dahlkemper, I would point out that this proposal...
Ms. Williams, I'm interested in your opinion, not Mr. Witt's opinion at this time. He did not introduce the resolution. You did. Are you willing to withdraw?
She's yielded the floor.
Are you willing to withdraw the resolution? I'm talking to the board colleagues.
I would like us to have further discussion and allow Mr. Witt to have a chance to say what he wants to.
I would point out that this particular proposal is IJ and IJR, with which we should be familiar, which were called out in the last time we discussed this agenda and offered as things to study for reference. And Mr. McMenamy has offered a few edits to it. We've discussed a couple of others, but this is not a substantial departure from the process that's presently in place, although we've just discussed that it takes in community input and adds board appointees, adds students, and adds the requirement that it be public, that it conform to GP 13, so that it's publicly noticed. Thereby, it would also conform to IGA. That's not a significant variance from what we have already discussed, and this is not the first time this item has been on the agenda. Ms. Felman?
I would agree with everything, and I would, everything you said, with the one exception, I think this needs to be a district-operated committee that gives us a report that is not something we can give, we can name the folks on it, we can have the students, but I really want to give Mr. McMenamy and his team the operational leadership that they need to run this committee. That, I do not believe that's our job.
And I also think our credibility is at stake as a school board in terms of whether we're going to follow board policy or not. It's that simple. And our board policy is to study at the first meeting and then to vote at the second meeting. That's all I'm asking, is that we follow board policy tonight.
And this is the third meeting on this topic, Ms. Dahlkemper?
Mr. Witt, let's be very clear. This may be the third top, the third time we've discussed this topic. This is the first time we've seen this proposal, which came to us at 5:30 this morning.
Is this the first time you've read policies IJ and IJR?
And this is, this is the first time, this is the first time, Mr. Witt, that we have seen a proposal with edits that is redlined. I think it's a good first step. I think this board needs to follow its policy. If we genuinely believe in policy, study it and vote on it at our next school board meeting.
Ms. Williams, you have seen the suggestions that Mr. McMenamy has put forward here. Will you accept an amendment, a sentence to your curriculum review proposal that I've marked up twice, which would read, "After sentence, the district's chief academic officer shall serve as advisor to the committee," and taking some language from Mr. McMenamy's suggestions, "and the committee shall include two teachers of the subject at hand, one or more students currently enrolled in the curriculum, and one or more students who have already completed the curriculum."
Yes, I would.
I would object. I think we have more than two students in our district that need to be on that committee.
Okay, then how would I clarify that language? I said, "One or more students..."
I think we need to dismiss that proposal and, and do what Ms. Dahlkemper suggests, which is have Mr. McMenamy's proposal to talk about next. It's a compromise. This is a chance for us to compromise.
It's a chance for us to collaborate, which is a word that was mentioned repeatedly during public comment. It is a chance, it is a chance for this board to respond to our community, which has said, "This resolution, as originally submitted, is not good for Jeffco students." This is an opportunity to look at a compromise proposal, to collaborate as a board, and to come back at our next board meeting after further study, after further questions we may submit to the superintendent, and then come to some agreement about how we move forward. And I think this is an excellent first step.
Okay, I'll ask again. Is there a motion on this item?
Would you like, would you like me to read the, the language as amended?
No!
No.
Absolutely not!
Ms. Felman?
Yes, Mr. Newkirk, feel free to read the language as amended.
A board committee for curriculum review. This committee shall be seated by the board. Each director may name up to two members of the committee. The district's chief academic officer shall serve as advisor to the committee, and the committee shall include two teachers of the subject at hand, one or more students currently enrolled in the curriculum, and one or more students who have already completed the curriculum. The charge to the committee is to review curricular choices for accuracy and omissions, conformity to Jefferson County academic standards, and to inform the board of materials that may reasonably be deemed to be objectionable. The committee shall regularly review texts and curricula according to priorities that it establishes, although the board may, from time to time, add items for review. The committee shall report all comments, majority and minority, to the board in writing as items are reviewed. The committee's initial project will be a review of the new AP US History curriculum.
I thought you said that that was not a priority for you, Mr. Newkirk.
Which is it?
I thought you told kids at Conifer High School and at Evergreen High School that we wanted to make sure our kids had the chance to study AP History in a way that was legislated by the college board. I don't understand. Were you lying to those students?
Ms. Felman, I'm simply reading from the original proposal sent forward by Ms. Williams.
I know, and I'm just asking because I was with you two days this week. I thought we really agreed.
Mr. Witt, you have a motion pending. You should have a second before you engage in discussion.
Is there a motion on the table? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
There's not. We move on.
I'm not aware of a motion.
Ms. Williams, what is the status of your thinking? I'm going to try one more time. You've had an opportunity to hear from Mr. Witt, and he chimed in, he opined on his perspective. I'm wondering if you could share with us whether you would be willing to pull your resolution in response to this board further studying the compromise proposal that the superintendent has put on the table.
Since we just received this new committee information today, and we have not had a thorough time to review it, I would like to keep all of the offers on the table.
Thank you.
So not having heard any motions, and I believe we've probably exhausted the discussion, I am going to make a motion. I move that we accept as a straw man Mr. McMenamy's proposal as it is a modification of existing policy with the addition that it be added as a board committee to GP 13 so that it meets policy IGA as well, so that we have a good compromise position that reflects what we've heard from the community of including parents and students, including the district rigor and advisors with content experts, and so that it meets the board goal of ensuring that we have a good understanding of all of the consideration that went into the curriculum recommendations, recognizing that it includes a minority and majority report in that proposal. It's my position that all of the objectives of the proposal that Mr. Newkirk just read are met in that. So that's my motion.
So what was your motion? Could you repeat it, please?
Yes. I move to accept Mr. McMenamy's proposal with the modification that it is a board committee and added to GP 13.
So you're not willing to compromise?
Uh, Ms. Felman?
And you're willing to break board policy?
Please don't interrupt the motion.
I'm just trying to get to compromise.
Please don't, please don't interrupt the motion. We've already had much compromise, and I think he's done a good job of capturing.
Really? Mr. Witt, you have a compromise?
I think he's done a great job of capturing the compromise.
Mr. Witt, would, would you do us a favor and share with us a little bit more, I don't know, three to five examples of how we've compromised this evening as a board?
So I'm going to finish the motion. So I'm going to finish the motion. That it include, that it be added to GP 13 so that it conforms to policy IGA as well. Is there a second? And that will move us to discussion.
I second it.
Okay, discussion. Now, I'm sorry, what was your question?
I do not, what compromise? Can you give me one example of what you just read, twice?
Yes, I can.
Okay, please.
Compromise number one, students have been added to the committee.
That was Mr. McMenamy's compromise, not yours.
Compromise number two.
That was Mr. McMenamy's compromise, not yours.
Compromise number three, the public has been added to the committee, so they're aware...
The public was already in IJ. IJ has set a balance of citizens and...
There was no public notice of those meetings and no public...
I disagree. There was, absolutely. I ran that committee.
Ms. Felman?
I know exactly.
We've, we've looked for the records. They don't exist, so there was not a public notice.
Just because the records do not exist. We have, every year, we, on our consent agenda, we have approved textbooks. The last year, you pulled something off so we could talk about it. We do this every single year. Ms. Williams asked just a couple of months ago for a majority and minority report that hadn't existed before.
That was not a curriculum review committee.
I, I did, IJ and IJR, same thing.
And this is why it's a modification, IJ and IJR, so that we bring in the compromises that have been discussed. So it's been moved and seconded?
There's, there's no compromise. And what's more, we have an issue that has come before this board that appeared today. We have not taken the time to study it further, to follow up with questions, and to, and once again, we're breaking board policy.
This is the third time this has been on the agenda, Ms. Dahlkemper.
Mr. Witt? Mr. Witt? You...
Please be quiet so the board can conduct business.
Mr. Witt, you can, Mr. Witt, you can try revisionist history all you want, but I will tell you that I received this proposal at 5:37 this morning. We are breaking board policy. It's simple. This is yet another example of when an issue has come to the board. What's the rush?
This is the third meeting, Ms. Dahlkemper. How long do you want to take?
Mr. Witt, I, I think we're just talking past each other. I don't know how many times I can share with you or repeat to you what our board policy is, that we're breaking it yet again, which is, study first, discuss, come back at the second board meeting, and then vote.
And so we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Dahlkemper?
No.
Ms. Felman?
No.
Mr. Newkirk?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes. This gives us a good framework to work from, and I would recommend that if... Silence. And if any board member wishes to modify this resolution, bring those modifications.
Because we don't work as a group. We do things individually behind closed doors. That's not the way we're supposed to do things. We talk about things. Oh, but we don't.
Our next agenda item is a public hearing on the Alexandria School of Innovation. Would the members of the Alexandria School of Innovation please join us? Thank you. Good evening. Mr. Matlich?
Tonight is a public hearing for the two charter schools that have applied to the district.
Excuse me for one moment, Mr. Matlich. Please be quiet in the room so we can conduct a meeting. If you'd like to have conversations, please take them outside. Mr. Matlich, please continue.
Thank you. Tonight is a public hearing for the two charter schools that have applied to the district to open in August of 2015. Both applications were received prior to the close of business on August 15th of this year as required. The charter application review committee has reviewed the applications. Their notes were provided to SPAC as well as to the Board of Education. District personnel have also reviewed the charter applications, and their notes were provided to the Board of Education. SPAC reviewed the information from the charter application review committee and had no further information they wanted to present tonight. Tonight, each charter applicant will have 10 minutes to inform the Board of Education about their program. Both applicants have submitted a presentation that they will be using as part of their discussion. At the conclusion of each 10-minute presentation, district staff and the applicants will be available to answer any questions you might have. Any open questions or requests for additional information that result from this discussion will be captured, and follow-up information will be provided to the Board of Education. The follow-up information and the formal recommendation from Cabinet will be provided to the Board of Education prior to the November 6th board meeting, at which time the decision will be made by the Board of Education regarding each application. Tonight, we have two applications. The first one is Alexandria School of Innovation, and that application is being led by Ms. Judy Brandenburg.
Good evening. My name is Judy Brandenburg, and on behalf of the Alexandria School of Innovation, we wish to thank the Board of Education, Superintendent Dan McMenamy, and the staff of Jeffco Public Schools for allowing us to bring a new educational choice to Jeffco Public Schools. How do I get it to go to the next one?
I might have to turn it.
So innovation is the thread that runs through American history, tracing back to our founding fathers. The founding fathers turned to science and engineering to solve the problems of their day. George Washington invented the threshing barn. Thomas Jefferson, the cipher wheel, and Ben Franklin invented the lightning rod. Jefferson will, Alexandria will challenge and equip students to be innovative and entrepreneurial in approaching today's problems. Alexandria will focus on the historical distinctiveness Americans, tracing back to the first century of our nation. The exceptional culture found in America includes industriousness, and will build on this concept by teaching students self-reliance, hard work, and getting ahead. In moving forward, we will continue to look back and learn from the innovative minds of the past. Alexandria will inspire innovators. So the mission of our school is to provide an innovative, creative, content-rich, integrated educational system of high standards to engage all K-12 students in an academically rigorous core curriculum, promoting a strong foundation in the sciences, technologies, engineering arts, and math, while building on community assets and partnering with parents to build character and pursue entrepreneurial endeavors so that students are college and career-ready. Our K-12 will have a science, technology, engineering arts, math-focused curriculum. K-8 will use a core knowledge curriculum with integrated learning. ASI High School has a college prep curriculum with an emphasis on concurrent enrollment. ASI High School students can earn both high school and college credit simultaneously. Our high school offers optional certificate programs, and students may earn a certificate in STEM, business, or the fine arts. All K-12 students will take engineering classes using either Project Lead the Way or another engineering curriculum. Entrepreneurship is a major theme at Alexandria. Junior achievement is used in grades K through 12 to teach financial literacy, work readiness, and entrepreneurship. Our incubator research labs provide all students with the opportunity to experience entrepreneurship firsthand. For instance, horticulture students may sell plants grown in the greenhouse, while art students may teach classes. Our digital media lab will provide opportunities for students to produce hands-on projects, such as vinyl signs, business cards, websites, or other products for the community. Students will learn to be responsible, ethical, and safe technology users. Students will create a digital portfolio, multimedia projects, and learn how to apply computer science languages through game and app design projects. It is our goal to secure America's global competitiveness by teaching our students 21st-century technology skills. The American history curriculum is based on the historical foundations laid by our founding fathers and viewed through the lens of American exceptionalism. Alexandria will focus on the role that technology, discovery, innovation, and entrepreneurship has played with American exceptionalism and will trace back to the roots of our founding fathers. STEM education will be enhanced with the addition of the letter "A" to spell STEAM. ASI offers the study of music, drama, fine arts, athletics, and activities. All seniors are expected to complete a major science, engineering, or art research project either by working in one of the STEAM incubators or by working in a commercial, government, or university research lab or technical facility. One of the most exciting features of our school, and I believe it's unique to Colorado, are our incubators that are driven by entrepreneurial leaders and enhanced by partners from business and industry together with collaborators from higher education. So an example of an incubator that's already in place is our aviation and aerospace incubator. In 2013, we wrote a grant with the Wolf Aviation Fund, which funded classes that were offered both after school and in the summer and in the evenings. Independence Aviation, which is out at Centennial Airport, allowed the students to take classes there as well as they let them fly in the simulators. Our, the Young Eagles program also allowed each student to go up in a, in a private plane. And then we took the kids to Metro State, where they also took a class and got to hang out with the, some of the students and professors. So we have great partnerships that have taken many years to put together, and they include Metro State. We've written several grants with DU. We have a partnership with Colorado School of Mines. Last week, I met with the innovation coordinator at CU Denver, and he's also at the Anshutes Medical Campus, and they are very eager to partner with us. UCCS and CSU. Students are prepared for post-secondary endeavors while in high school through our higher education collaborative opportunities. And then we have many business and industry partners. For instance, Seeker Engineering is an aviation, or it's an aerospace company here, and we're partnering actually with the owner and CEO. We've written several grants with Incana, Gas and Oil, who, by the way, have money, and Raytheon, Independence Aviation, and Newmont. And then we have many other community partners. I want to spend the rest of our time and give our, some of our mentors a chance to speak and just share a little bit about them. I have three, and I want them each to share about a minute. And the first one is Cindy Williams. Cindy is actually the former vice president of Solutions and Innovation at Newmont Mining, which is actually Colorado's largest business. And she oversaw a billion, a budget of a half a billion dollars. So she is a powerful woman, the highest-ranking female in her company, and I'd like her to share a minute, Cindy.
Thanks, Judy. It's a pleasure to be able to talk to the board members tonight. But as a representative of, of industry and a resident of Jefferson County, my perspective is that this board needs to look at proposals like the Alexandria School of Innovation with enthusiasm and to move forward on them with a real sense of urgency. I mean, from the perspective of, of industry in Colorado, the gap in STEM education is, is very real and very tangible. We think of it as a real and present danger. We simply don't have enough. We don't have enough students with enough education in science, technology, engineering arts, and math to fill positions that we have open right now in companies. And we see that gap just getting worse and worse in the years out in front of us. So there's an urgent need to improve this education. I think there's a lot of national research that supports the idea that there are three legs essentially to a successful platform in improving this gap in, in STEM available employees to business. Those are, first of all, improving the quality of STEM education and the alternatives available for different types of students. And I think the Alexandria School is a good example of that. Second, I think it's very important that we have programs that help kids connect to industry. A lot of kids never enter STEM, STEM or STEAM careers simply because they never get the opportunity to be exposed to those careers. So one of the innovative programs that Ms. Brandberg has put together here in the last year and piloted successfully, I might say, is called experiential learning. And in those programs, we've actually taken kids out to the front lines of industry, the front lines of academia, and we've let them work side by side with, with people in STEM fields. And they get to see that passion and enthusiasm that those people have for their careers and for the impact that they can have on the world. And believe me, that, that makes a difference in how kids think and what they get excited about. The third leg is that we need to help underrepresented populations be more a part of, of STEM and STEM careers. Women are 40%, 46% of the workforce in the US, but only 25% of STEM professionals. That gives us a great opportunity to tap more brains and bring them into the program. And again, Judy's piloted a program called STEM for All that puts together special programs that help women and help minorities connect to STEM, meet people that are in STEM that look like them, and get opportunities to get excited about careers that can really change their future and perhaps change the, the future of America. So, my full support to the program.
Thank you, Cindy. Our next representative is going to be Michael Phillips. He is a Lockheed Martin engineer. He brought thousands of dollars' worth of in-kind goods and donations to a project that we worked on before, and he's a powerful mentor. He's, he's brought First Robotics, Best Robotics, and other programs into the schools. Go ahead, Mike.
My name's Michael Phillips. I'm a Lockheed Martin fellow and a chief engineer at our Space Systems Company in Waterton. I've been involved in STEM outreach for the last three years, mostly because of a corporate focus effort to provide outreach from our company to STEM education. Lockheed Martin is, is committed to mentoring K through 12 students to inspire them to pursue technical careers in STEM fields that benefit aerospace and defense. Alexandria School of Innovation provides a great opportunity for engineers to mentor out and provide experiential learning for those students using industry-standard tools and processes so they learn the skills necessary to solve technically challenging problems. In the last year, I spent a whole year establishing a robotics program for middle school students. We inspired about 50 students through a series of after-school education programs and summer programs, ultimately fielding three first LEGO teams and a first tech challenge team to compete in Colorado State competition. My wife and I, Diane, have been involved in Judy and Barry's first school in, at STEM-related activities, and we continue to support their efforts in STEM ventures and ASI. So I'm personally committed to bringing LM engineers to this school to help mentor them in the right way and also challenge our engineers to make sure we fill the talent pipeline from our local community. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. And then our last speaker is going to be, uh, that's it?
We're trying to reserve at least half the time for you guys to be able to ask questions. My question to you would be, would you like to hear from the last speaker, or would you like to proceed with questions?
If we can take a couple of more minutes and hear from the last speaker, would everyone agree with that? Yes, please.
Our last speaker is Alan Lockheed, and it's after him that Lockheed Martin was named. He's a, he's the inspiration for this project.
That's a mighty tall order there, but, yes. My name is Alan Lockheed Jr. My father was the fellow who stood up the Lockheed Company in the 1930s, created the Lockheed Vega, which demonstrated the feasibility and practicality of commercial aviation transportation and set many, many records in pioneering and exploration with wonderful people flying them. His brother, my uncle, was Malcolm Lockheed. He was a creator of hydraulic brakes for cars, which advanced the practicality, speed capabilities, and safety of automobiles. Those gentlemen grew up with a heritage that they granted to me, which was, in today's picture, STEAM. And that is, they learned how to build things, how to imagine things, how to coordinate the eye, the brain, the tools, and the hands to create things that were needed as they grew up. The ages of eight to 12 are critical. That is, when people are putting together the cubicles and the relationships between each piece of the knowledge that they've been taking in all of their life until that point. I was blessed to grow up that way. I don't have any relationship to Lockheed Martin, and I, I don't want anyone to think that I do, but I do have that heritage. That heritage is expressed in the STEM school that the Brandbergs created, in the Alexandria school that they are proposing and putting together here in Jefferson County. I am a resident and a voter in Jefferson County, and I want you to know that I have seen the academy put together with the school as these people have innovated, where young people have gotten together and done MBA-level work just naturally, thanks to the contributions of people like Mike Phillips, gentlemen from Ball, gentlemen from, from UCLA. I have seen, and it's a long list, so you'll forgive me, I hope, if I read from, from it here. These young people have engaged in MBA-level skills in team building, structured problem-solving, brainstorming, organization. Skills and interests identified, integrated, and work assignments and task assignments created by the kids with their mentors. Analysis of the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities and threats applied to the competitions that they have engaged in and created winning teams that love to work together and like my father and his brother and myself, create a lifelong learning environment in each of these individuals and the teams that have come together. I think this will be a tremendous opportunity for Jefferson County, and I hope that you can give it due consideration. I thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll take questions, I guess.
I'm going to go around the table, and I'm going to ask each board member to keep it to two questions, and then we'll do a second round if we can.
I want to introduce Tiffany Vaughn, and she and I wrote most of the educational plan. She's going to be helping me.
Ms. Feldman?
So I had a question about your application, and I cannot find the page number, so I apologize for that right now. It seemed like you had a number of supporter, supporting letters, both to Jeffco and to Douglas County. Are you applying in both places?
No, we are not.
So you were, did you already apply to Douglas County and were turned down?
Yes. So the protocol was, we submitted an application in, on March 15th, and they requested that we make revisions. And so we, we worked all summer at making all those revisions. And at the end of the summer, like three weeks before this application deadline came, they said, why don't you submit to Jeffco? And so I came here kicking and screaming, but I love it.
Do you have parents? Anybody from Jeffco on your--
I, I'm a Jeffco board resident.
So, but no parents?
We have, not on our board.
Okay. And could you tell me the number of students that you would have, you have letters of--
I think I got it. Okay.
Intent four?
We have just about 200. I haven't run the actual numbers, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we've done this before. We actually opened a school with 450, and it was no problem because of the tremendous demand for this type of curriculum.
Ms. Dahl Kemper?
I'd like to go back to American exceptionalism for a moment. Tell us a little bit more about how that works in your charter school.
Okay. So I agree with you 100% that students need to hear a total unvarnished view of, of history. And I actually wrote this about a year and a half ago and posted it on our website. We posted our educational plan, and so it had nothing to do with this whole drama tonight. So I, I totally want a very accurate representation from original sources. That's what we'll use for our curriculum. And I will not tolerate any historical revisionism.
Well, I'd like to share a quote from a CU Boulder professor named Fred Anderson. And Fred Anderson served on the commission in the past that actually looked at a review of AP US history. And Anderson calls the idea of American exceptionalism, quote, "a fascinating concept." Quote, "Effectively, it's a faith position. It's sort of like intelligent design. It can't be disproven or proven by evidence, and historians are bound by evidence." So I, it raises red flags for me in the context of our broader conversation that we've had this evening. I would like to also come back to a comment that Ms. Feldman made regarding Doug Co. It was my understanding that the application was turned down in Doug Co. because there were deficiencies.
No, it was not turned down. We actually withdrew it. And they requested that we make some revisions, and so--
Right. So why not, how, how can you assure us that the issues that were raised in Doug Co. have been fully addressed? And I would certainly love if Mr. McMenamy has any thoughts on why Doug Co. said, probably better to withdraw your proposal, which typically means there's more work to do on it. But how can you assure us that this is something that we should-- But how can you assure us that this is something that we should look at after you withdrew it from Doug Co.? How is this good for our kids if it wasn't good for Doug Co. kids?
Well, I, okay, go ahead. Okay.
The reason why we withdrew the charter is, for one thing, they required 1,000 letters of intent, and at the time, we didn't have 1,000 letters of intent, and they didn't say that we could never come back if we chose to do so. But at the time when we withdrew, the charter needed some revisions, so we worked all summer long. We completed all of those revisions, plus we feel like we created even a more superior charter to what it was prior. And we could have gone back to Doug Co. in the next cycle, but because we were made, it was made aware to us through the media, actually, I read the article, that Jefferson County was considering the opportunities of inviting charters to come and present here. And so that's why we chose to come here. It was a choice. It wasn't something where we were denied anything. We could have continued through that process of revision with Doug Co., but we chose to, after our revisions, take this opportunity to be part of this situation here in Jefferson County.
I have one more quick follow-up question. Ms. Williams, I really appreciated your comments about students who are underrepresented in STEM courses, and I believe Colorado is poised to be the most innovative state in the country. And you're right, we need to look at our talent pipeline and how we're going to make sure we strengthen our talent pipeline rather than importing talent into Jefferson County, I'm sorry, into, across Colorado. We know that females, minorities, rural students are typically underrepresented in STEM programs. Very excited about the STEM programs that we have underway in our local neighborhood schools as well. It's very exciting to see that work and support STEM 100%. Ms. Brandberg, I'd like to come back to you for a moment to ask you how you will ensure your student population reflects Jeffco School's student population and in turn addresses some of the very issues regarding underrepresented students, students of poverty, students of color, females, others.
Well, I have a journalism, public relations background, and so we're going to, as soon as we leave here tonight, tomorrow morning, we're going to start an aggressive marketing campaign to the students in Jefferson County. And I have not ruled out, I know this would be an extra expense, but we would actually like to even possibly check into busing kids in, maybe from some of these neighborhoods where they are underrepresented. And it's a little difficult with charters because we have to abide by the lottery guidelines for CDE, so we have to have a pure lottery, and that is actually, we just got a letter today saying that we have been accepted to submit our CDE startup grant proposal. We'll do that on October 14th, so we have 12 more days to get that in, and I had to submit a very detailed lottery policy, and it has to be totally unbiased. Anybody that puts in their letter can get it in, but we would love to market and recruit some of those neighborhoods that are underrepresented.
And will you be offering free full-day kindergarten?
Well, we are going to be starting with grades six through nine first, and because our incubator research labs, they actually fit best in middle school and high school, and we have those business partnerships, they're all ready, they're ready to go, and so we want to start there first, and then we'll add one grade level each year, and then in year four, we'll go back and do K-5. And I would love to do a full-day kindergarten. That, research shows that children do better.
Research shows children do better. I couldn't agree more.
Okay, I want to clarify what Judy means by that. If we chose to have a full-day kindergarten when we implemented K through five, we have never said that it would be free. So I don't know what's going on, what you're talking about. She, I don't think she understood your question.
So you would not, you would not offer, I'm just curious to know if you would offer full-day kindergarten free to students who attend your charter schools, especially given your good point about the fact that it does show good return on investment, and it makes a difference for our kids.
We'll determine that after we get charter approval.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. The first one is about facilities.
I just want to add one more thing. Last year, Judy and Cindy and I, we created a women's, a young women's event where 250 young women from all over the Denver metro area came, and we sponsored many underprivileged young women by scholarship and made sure they had transportation to get there, and we had engineers who were from a minority background come and speak. One of them was from Lockheed Martin, and then we had also one from, who was a doctoral student from CU Boulder and was also from the nation of?
Kenya.
Kenya. So during that experience, those 250 young women were majorly impacted by the event, and we've seen, as a result of that, a lot of movement in those young ladies' lives. Some of them, I got to watch personally, moved towards STEM-type educational opportunities. And also, one thing that I want to mention with regards to underprivileged, Judy and I, last year, wrote a grant to Google for 50,000 to try to orchestrate an event here in Colorado where young women from not only Colorado but other states like the state of California, in the areas where women are underprivileged, could come and be a part of that. We didn't win that grant, but we're the kind of people that we want to do those kinds of things to make a difference in this generation.
Thank you. Question on facilities.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I saw a mention of a few facility alternatives, but also some discussion by the reviewers that it's not clear that any of those facilities would necessarily allow an educational endeavor in those facilities. Where are you on that? Am I misunderstanding it?
Okay, I'd like to introduce Dave Dron, and he has been working with us for the past 10 years on a broad variety of proposals, and I'd like you to go ahead and address that.
I'm Dave Dron. I'm the managing broker for Cold Bank Commercial. I've opened five charter schools, including the STEM one that they did around the city. One of the problems that we have is when we go in without a charter, looking at a building, put yourself as a building owner, even if your building fit our requirements, which to take advantage of the entire spectrum of the education they're going to offer, has to be between 50 and 100,000 square feet. There aren't many of those in Jeffco right now that fit their needs. Office parks typically don't like schools in their midst, but that's an alternative. We're also looking at some ground with some investors to actually build a building. But right now, we're going to be looking at probably a warehouse facility, just like we did in Douglas County. That facility, we went back and forth for almost a year with the ownership because we couldn't get the charter school through, we just couldn't get the charter. So I'm sitting there talking to two owners who are sitting there dying with a building in 2008, wanting to have the school in it, and we couldn't do it until we got the charter. As soon as we got the charter, the school went together. The owners participated greatly. One of the owner's family actually became part of the school. Up in Pinnacle Charter School, we went to Skate City, right across from Pinnacle, and converted that building to their high school. That took about six to eight months. We did a startup charter school at 120th as well, where we found a building, they expanded on it, and did it that way. But we're in the process of looking, I look, excuse me, once or twice a week for properties that are large enough to fit our needs, but until we know that we've got a school to bring to the table, it's kind of hard to get an owner. Just imagine, like I said, imagine you're the owner of the building. What are you going to say? Oh yeah, sure. And then they don't get the charter, and your building's off the market, and, you know, for them, it's business. It has nothing to do with the good works that these people do. Just as a sidebar, my child was a troubled youth. Charter schools kept him fairly well straight and normal till he got to be a young adult, and then it didn't work so well. But charter, so I'm committed to charter schools, and it's part of my give back to the community. So that's where we're at with facilities. It's doable. It won't be easy, but it's doable, and we should be able to do it very quickly as soon as we get the, go ahead, to move.
Thank you. And then the other question that I would ask is, you seem to have excellent backing and support from the business community. You really have brought, both in documentation and in the meeting, remarkable support from the community, and I love seeing that engagement and that connection. It's clearly a value that you bring. I'm a little less impressed to date with your connection to the community, to the parents, to students that want to be here in Jeffco in this school, and I'm hoping maybe you can tell me a little bit more about how you've reached out, what your level of commitment in this community is, and why you believe that it would be better than it is now.
Okay, 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 you go ahead.
This past weekend, there was a share fair at DU.
Yes.
And it was a STEMosphere, and at the STEMosphere, we had 50 letters of intent that day. So I'm going to let Judy talk a little bit more about that, but one of the things also that you might want to be aware of is that here in this county, in this county of Jefferson County, we know that there is a need for innovation and for science, technology, and engineering, and mathematics. Quite a few years ago, there was a STEM event in the state of Colorado, and Judy and I attended, and there were many people from all over the state of Colorado talking about why STEM is important in the Denver metro area. And so Judy and I believed in our hearts back then that we were meant to write these charters, not just for one school district, but for as many as possible to build our economy into a hub for the STEM industry in the nation, so that we would receive the recognition as a state, as a place similar to what California experienced when they became the Silicon Valley. We want to make Colorado the place to come for STEM education and for STEM jobs.
Thank you.
Okay, so let me answer that question. So first of all, like Tiffany said, we participated, we were vendors this last weekend at DU, at the Magnus Arena, and the Morgridge family put on this event, and we actually wrote a $130,000 grant several years ago. I wrote it. And we got a CNC router, a 3D printer, and a laser engraver for our engineering lab, and we're in line to get that again. And we are deeply committed to Jefferson County. I've been a little tentative, a little shaky, plus I've been very busy writing that, this new startup grant, and then just preparing for tonight. But now we can really concentrate all of our efforts, and we want to bring those students that left Jefferson County and went to another county, and we're going to bring them back. And our goal is to not only reach one school, but there's a little aphorism that says, when the tide rises, all the boats float, and so once STEM is emphasized, then it not only benefits our school, but it will benefit all schools in Jefferson County's schools.
But before I throw it over to Ms. Williams, I'll mention to Ms. Williams, I too am a Newmont alum, so maybe we can exchange some notes later. Ms. Williams.
Okay, Ms. Williams.
So, two questions to start off with. One is, can you talk a little bit more about what part of Jefferson County you're looking at trying to implement the school? And then let's talk a little bit more about the bus system, because I'm familiar with how Pinnacle does their busing, and that they have a great outreach to make it available for so many children in that neighborhood, so it doesn't have to be right down, you know, a block away from their home to be their home school. They make it very accessible. So how would that get funded, and how do you see that?
Okay, if a charter school is located on a major artery, say C-470, it's proven that parents will drive 30 to even 40, 45 minutes to come to a school of choice. And so in our last school, we actually had students come from 90 different schools and seven different school districts because of the content. So our goal right now is, we're looking at that southeast quadrant of Jefferson County near C-470, and we do have the capacity. We have the people involved in this project who have transportation expertise, and it would probably take a private grant, that we would have to raise the money, but we would be willing to bus kids in. When I first moved to Denver, 35 years ago, or 30 years ago, we were living in southeast Denver, and we were living in a neighborhood that was doing forced busing. So this would be optional busing.
Great. And then, as I read over your application, you did touch on special education. Can you talk about that? Because that's been a big issue that the community has brought up at the board meetings, that a lot of times they feel the charter schools are exclusive. So can you talk about how it would not be?
Right. Charter schools have to take, whoever puts their name in the lottery will take everyone. And there's a little phrase that says, "A society will be judged on how we treat our weakest members," and I think it's very important. People have said, "Well, if you're a STEM school, then you only care about the best and brightest," and that is not true. We actually believe that a STEM curriculum, a hands-on curriculum, one that offers engineering classes, is very healthy for all spectrums. And so let's just say, for instance, in the autism spectrum, in our previous school, we had a high percentage of students with that need, and we were able to meet that need. One of the comments in the feedback section said, "Well, do kids have to take engineering?" I mean, it sounds like a terrible subject. And it was just the opposite, that engineering became the favorite class of everyone. And I just toured the school the other day, and we have recruited several great, great teachers that are amazing, and they said something, they said, "We only teach for 10 minutes, and the rest of the time, the kids are doing a hands-on project." And so that is, boys, girls, everyone loves engineering.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Newkirk.
And my question is for Ms. Brandberg as well, and you may have heard earlier our discussion that Jefferson County highly values input from its parents and its citizens, and on these committees especially. Would you, how would you describe, what would the parents of students in your school, how would they have a meaningful role in governance?
Well, first, they're going to be board members, and although we believe in a business and industry connection, sometimes those parents, if they don't have kids in the school, they aren't good board members. I hate to say that. So we are going to really recruit parents that, board members that have parents in the school. And I actually started my little career in the schools as the volunteer coordinator at a local high school, and research shows that students do better in school if the parents are actively engaged. And so we're going to welcome those parents to come in and actually volunteer before school, after school, during school. The more engaged parents are, the better students will do.
Within the school's structure, the way we wrote the charter this summer, we made sure that each of the main components of the school was made of committees that were made up of a diverse group of people. Similar, I guess, in a way to kind of what I heard you talking about, that this district in the past has had committees that were made up of a diverse group of people helping to make collaborative decisions. And so we want to be sure that our committees have not only a good, strong representation from parents, but we also were going to make sure that we have our industry partners involved and also have our educators involved. And the vision for our school is to value and mentor all people involved within this school program to empower our children so that they can aspire and reach their dreams and become the mathematical, engineering, science, and technology students that we see emerging in this generation. Because one of the things that we've learned, Judy and I, and also Cindy, is that the young people... is that the young people in this generation are doing things that are amazing. They're creating apps, and they're showing high levels of ability at an early age to do innovation, and they're very creative. They're able to learn computer science in seventh grade. A lot of, last year, I worked with a code club, and I had seventh and eighth-grade students who were?
I'm sorry, pardon me for one moment. Pardon me for one moment, I need to interrupt. The room is getting noisy. I would ask that everyone be respectful of the proceedings, and if you wish to talk, please leave the room. Thank you.
Last year, I was a risk taker, because I'm a mathematics instructor. I've been instructing math for 29 years. I've taught at the college level, high school, and middle school and elementary level. And last year, we worked with a group of seventh and eighth-grade students who were named best in the state, in the state of Colorado, and best in the West. They also competed at the national level, and they did create an app. And one of my students went on to achieve employment over the summer, going into his ninth-grade year, doing computer science, based on what he learned in an after-school program. So the kind of innovation that we want to see ignited in the hearts of the kids, we know that it will take a collaborative effort on the part of the community. We want to get the industry involved, the parents involved, and we want to have our teachers involved in empowering these kids.
So if you had one performance metric that you could pick that would determine if your school was a success, what would that be?
Go ahead. Well, one of the things as an educator that we want to see happen in this program is that our students will leave as seniors and go right into opportunities in the STEM field, and that they will receive scholarships and probably internships even through their high school years with companies like United Launch Alliance, H. Toom Hill, Lockheed Martin, and any of the other STEM industries that are represented here in this state. We want to empower these kids to fulfill the destiny that, as Mr. Lockheed mentioned tonight, that we have a need for this. And Ms. Williams also mentioned, you know, that here in this state right now, we have positions that are not being filled because there's no one there to fill them.
With that, I'd like to thank the school for presenting tonight and allowing us to probe a little. We very much appreciate this. I'll ask...